Is posted on our agenda and it will also be posted in the chat. And if anyone would like to speak live during the meeting, you can fill out that form on air table and indicate that you would like to speak live and we will promote you accordingly. We'll do our informational updates and then we will circle back to public comment to give you a chance to put in any of those requests. So the two other announcements, one, happy birthday Sean Kelly. And although all those screens obviously, there you go, wave happy birthday. And thank you for being with us tonight. And two is for our final meeting of the year. We initially had two meetings scheduled in June. Administration has taken a look at what is remaining on our agendas for this school year. And we're comfortable with instead of having a meeting on both June 7th and June 21st, we're just going to collapse that to one June meeting and we will be having one meeting in June on Monday, June 14th. Please stay tuned for details about June 14th. We may be able to do that meeting in person. We're reaching figuring out all the details for how to make that happen, but that is our hope. So please stay tuned for details. If there are changes, we will certainly notify the public accordingly, but at least at the moment, we are tentatively planning for an in-person meeting on June 14th to conclude our year. And with that, Bill, the mic is yours.
Well, last week we did send out to the staff and to the parents a little summary sheet of COVID updates that dealt with masks and face coverings, shared equipment and supplies, air conditioning and fans in rooms. Keep in mind that in some instances because of the health needs of a child, they may need, or for that factor staff, we do have a few air conditioners around the system. The only thing we advised is that if you for the staff member has an air conditioner in the room that they still allow the windows to be cracked because oftentimes the air conditioner mostly recirculates air within the room so that there have been no questions, but if anyone from the public has any questions to us, I know that Jim is getting some questions in terms of his WA graduation going to be more opened up and as of right now, we don't anticipate that because plans are so detailed and in place. You know, Jim continues to look at it, talk this morning again, but I don't anticipate any, any changes to what he has in place right now and keeping in mind that will be on Friday night, June 4th at 5:30 PM. Want to really congratulate WA students for having a best buddies prom between students that was held under a tent at Westford Academy, just a wonderful, wonderful event. I have some pictures here that I will send to you. You know, involves students with special needs and it's just, just a terrific event and shows how much our students and our staff deeply care about all, all students. Want to congratulate also the Stony Brook School and if you don't mind have Chris kind of fill in the blanks here about their outside sort of theater in the semi-round. As you know, that when the school was constructed, there was an outside theater, so with tiered seating. Well, for many years that was overgrown and, and not used. And between Rick McElhany and Chris, they have restored that area. There was a production, Chris, if you can go if you don't mind chip, Chris chipping in, indicate what was, what was presented?
Sure. Yeah. Rick McElhany has done a phenomenal job as, as a point person looking first at just extending our outdoor learning spaces. And so we expended the, we extended the wifi around the building as well too, allowing just people more access to outside. And so as we came into the spring, we looked at that amphitheater area and looked to see if there'd be a way that we could reinforce the steps that exists there and cleaned out the bottom area that had been designed for performances. And so we have our, our seventh grade social studies teachers were getting very excited about the space, using it for different ancient history type things. Our Latin teacher is very excited about using it. The first project that, that came on boards was a production for SBTA, the Stony Brook Theater Arts. So they did their festival piece by Ozabob this Friday night. And then they were able to do the, the same production they were able to do it Saturday at WA. So they did it with WA Theater Arts and their production of Dancing at Lunaza. And so they've been doing a lot of live outdoor theater. So the fact that that sort of put, put an urgency to the project to get it ready so that they could have that space. And so we're excited to, to use it. I mean, during the day on Friday, the entire eighth grade went outside in the morning to watch an in-school production of this performance. And it's just been a great, it's been great to see all of the collaboration involved in bringing it back together and just seeing it used has been fantastic.
Great, great space and utilized well right now. The only other thing I have for tonight's update, because it's relatively brief is it's been a tough year for everyone. Children, staff, parents, I'm going to recommend again that if, if, if you want to be cheered up a little bit and look at life a little bit more optimistically than what we've been able to do. We'd recommend going online and watching a video that's entitled, Celebrate What's Right With The World. Now we repeat that title, celebrate what's right with the world. I'll send out a notice to the parents at small. It's by Dwight Jones, who was a longtime photographer for National Geographic Magazine. We've shown that periodically to the teaching staff when we had everyone in the convocation opening day. It was always very, very well received and it really puts life in perspective, a little bit different than what we've, we've the perspective we've had in the last year. So I'll, I'll send out a link in the name of it, but strongly encourage people to just view that. The, the long version is about, it's about 30 minutes. There's a shorter TED Talk version, not quite as good and comprehensive, but 18 to 20 minutes, but whatever version you see, 18 minutes or longer, it's, it's well worth viewing. And that's, that's all that I have for, for the update.
Thank you for those updates. I love, I love the, I love the sentiment of that. I look forward to checking that, that video out and love hearing all the news of, of live theater returning to Westford and making use of those wonderful outdoor spaces and being creative in being creative. Nothing can start, can stop the creative forces at work in Westford Public Schools. So thank you for all those efforts, the wonderful efforts. Great to hear about. And next up, Carrie.
Good evening. Well, we have MCAS underway and it feels like we've been talking about MCAS for quite some time throughout the course of the year, but we are up and running and I'm pleased to share that it's going very well. We have our RLA students in grades three through eight participating from home remotely, which is certainly a first. And I assume potentially a last, but we are thrilled that the students and teachers have been able to work through this very different mode of administering the assessment. And we, although certainly teaching time was something that we were hesitant on giving up, we do look forward to seeing what the results yield. And while we certainly won't use this data as, in a way that's as granular, granular as we have in the past, I do think it does help kind of compare where we are because every district has had such different learning models. So we do think that it will be telling in some ways in a, in a rather broad sense. So that while we've had a couple of learning experiences as we've rolled it out, it's been going very well and much of that was due to our Director of Digital Learning, Julie Bedrow, who has really helped spearhead the transition particularly to the RLA situation. We've been participating online with MCAS, but having students at home does add another dimension. And the other piece is I'm pleased to say that we are live with our signup for our Bridge to Success Program for eligible students. They were contacted today and we had 213 students who we reached out to. And we just opened the survey. The parents received the, the form to express their interest through the letter that went out today and we already have 45 responses. And only one of which has declined the program. So it seems like if it follows the same trajectory, we will have quite a turnout, which we're very thrilled about. And it is a relatively fast turnaround because we know that families will want to understand what their schedule looks like. And we've got to start planning the groupings based on student needs. So the survey or the form does close this Thursday by 3:00 PM. And like to thank everybody who is interested and we also understand that summer programs like this may not fit into certain family schedules and, and that's absolutely fine. This is entirely optional for those students who are eligible, but we're excited to have whoever is able and willing to make it.
Great. Fantastic. Thank you, Carrie. Jean, do you have an update that's separate from, I know you're later in the agenda for COVID, COVID news, but anything else?
Well, currently this office, we have, have an employee, an outpouring time at the end of the year. I'm kind of sad to see her go, but they're talking about moving to Florida and you can't commute from there. So we will be posting, we, we may change things up a bit, but she may wind up in the next, the replacement may be payroll pot AP for us. That's kind of what I'm thinking at the moment. And we're working on the statement of interest for the roof at the Blanchard School. We'll also have a report due to the state on the COVID grants, June 4th. And on June 9th, we begin the massive munis changeover to update our system and make it a little more user friendly for staff who are not maybe savvy with that type of software. That's majority of what's going on in the business office.
Sounds very busy. Thank you.
It's a little busy and everyone now with everyone back to purchasing again. So it's like, oh, wait a minute. It's not as dull in here as it was, is it?
Well, that I'm sure that, that does add to things. So thank you. Thank you for thought, for all the juggling and for all the support that you've been providing.
Thank you. You've all been very kind.
Thank you. Any school committee update? Chris?
Policy Subcommittee is meeting tomorrow afternoon, bless you, at 3 o'clock, is it guys? I've forgotten already. At 3 o'clock, there's an agenda published if anybody wants to drop in. I just wanted, we talked about theater at Stony Brook and just, it was a really exciting weekend for Stony Brook students and for WA students for theater. So I got to take in some of that at, at WA. And boy, it's been a long time since we've got to, to applaud, you know, live arts in our schools and it was a really nice experience. And just a look ahead, Westford Academy Theater Arts is doing the musical once, producing that and that will be June, I think 11th, 12th, 13th, 17th, 18th, 19th. Check, check websites, Facebook thing like, things like that, but that's going to be a really good show, also going to be outdoors in the courtyard. Great show, great music. So looking forward to that. And then lastly, I think, you know, we're coming up to the end of the year, we're coming up to graduation. Bill addressed a little bit like might graduation be opened up a little bit more and I just, I just want to extend words of thanks for, to our administrators and our teachers and our staff just for getting us through this year. And I know with these end of the year celebrations that are so important to people, it's really hard that we still don't get to do all the things we want to do. And it's, it's this weird time where things are opening up and things are looking positive, but it's, as Bill said, it's also hard to kind of change and turn on a dime. So, and I just want to thank our parents and our students too, for their continued flexibility and patience and for the grace that I think people have been extending to our administrators, teachers and staff about what we can and can't do. It's hard, it's hard to plan these things and then have state guidelines change and, and turn things around. So I think after the year we've had, like honestly, I'm just grateful for, I think we all are grateful for health and family in our community and that things are looking a little brighter and, and looks like things are going to be opening up. And hopefully next year will look a little bit more normal for everybody.
Well said, Chris. Absolutely. Valerie?
Just wanted to thank Westford, Westford CPAC Group for hosting a virtual workshop on understanding the IEP. I don't have any personal lived experience with that process, but I attended and learned so much and was really struck by how much these families navigate constantly. So thanks for putting that on for some of us to kind of get better understanding of that process.
Catherine?
Thanks, George. This actually kind of follows on from Valerie. And I also attended the Westford Special Education Parent Forum, which is a group of parents on Facebook. And have started a small, a series of small group discussions. And, and they just launched this week with their first topic on 2E, twice exceptional kids. And it was really enlightening and I was really impressed with just how open these parents were and how they were there supporting each other. And, and they have more coming up over June, looking at various other topics. So it was really well done.
Thank you. Other, other updates? The, the one other that occurs to me is now that we might not be meeting in public session again until June 14th is a friendly reminder for everyone about town meeting on June 12th. Town meeting will be held outdoors on the Westford Academy Field. Of course, that is where the school budget is approved every year. There are also a number of capital projects which are very important to supporting the schools. So please, we encourage everyone to participate in the process and the Legal Women Voters always holds a town meeting preview. If you need more information about any of the issues that are being discussed at town meeting, but we do encourage everyone to participate in our town meeting process. It is democracy at its finest. So please join us on the Westford Academy Field on June 12th. Anything, anything else for updates before we circle back to public forum? Okay, with that, I believe we do have one request in the air table to speak publicly. So, and Chris is already on it. Thank you, Zoom Master. And Janelle, welcome. Good to see you.
Same here. Hi, guys. Congratulations, Catherine, to your, first time I'm seeing you online, but I do have a question. So my son came home from school last week and told me that academic support was no longer going to be offered for 11th and 12th graders at WA. That they were going to change the, and that's all he said. So I reached out to his, I, well, not IEP, his academic support person today, and she did indicate that that was in fact happening, that 11th and 12th graders will no longer be able to take academic support regardless of what is on their IEP or their 504 plan. And there was no way to ask for a waiver. This concerns me tremendously. She did, excuse me?
But Janelle, we're going to have to look into, into that. Yes. We originally heard that it was budget related, but.
Okay. So let me read to you what, yeah, what she wrote to me today. Because I just wanted to make sure I had all the information before I beamed, before I asked to beam in, so I didn't have egg on my face. She did say to me that, hi Janelle, unfortunately it was not my decision. Oh, wait, that was a second follow-up email. Maybe it was right. Oh. Thanks for reaching out. Unfortunately, Sam heard correctly. Academic tutorial is only being offered to ninth and 10th graders next year. 11th and 12th graders will be able to choose between a DLT, which is free period, or revamped academic support to be paired with students who need help with executive functioning with students from the National Honor Society. Does not work for me. So I mean, hopefully it's wrong. I'm sorry, I don't have more information, but I hope this helps a little. If you have any further questions, concerns, I can try to answer them for you. I will say that Jessica has been a lifesaver for my son, as well as many other people in her class this year. And I don't even care if it's a budget constraint. That doesn't work for me. I wish she kind of didn't say that, but he's, you know, a lot of the kids are going to be 12th graders next year after, well, the people that I'm speaking for. After having a year and a half of upheaval, this is not the year to make the change. So I would like more information and before my son heard it, it should have been explained to the parents because I believe a lot of parents are in very discouraged by hearing this from their kids.
Say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you for bringing forth the concern, Janelle. And, and I think, you know, this is a good example of if, if you hear something and you don't know what's happening, come to us and ask. And then we'll try and get to the bottom of it. I'm not aware of any budgetary change or constraint. I wonder if there's some kind of miscommunication. I don't know. I don't know if any, if anyone has, has thoughts or can add to the, the concern. It sounds like, Carrie, can you maybe help translate here?
Sure. This year we were able to offer academic tutorial for students based on the 240 grant, special education grants that we receive each year. We have been tagged as over identifying, having an over identification of white students identified as specific learning disability. So we were required to spend 15% of that grant to try to mitigate that, to provide general education support in order to reduce the number of white students who were identified as SLD, specific learning disability. So with that grant, Courtney, spearheading this with the administration, was able to hire one additional staff member in order to utilize that staff member to help address this issue. So having that single staff member across all four grade levels was something that we couldn't offer and kind of maintain the fidelity of the intention of the program. It has worked out well. There, it's geared toward ninth and 10th graders at the high school level and there are some students at different grades as well based on individual conversations with the personnel. But that's, so we aren't, we aren't taking anything away in terms of what is currently offered to all students. It's one staff member and it's geared specific toward general education support to assist with that over identification for the significant disproportionality.
So my question, Carrie, I guess is if you're not taking it away, then my son's getting it next year?
No, meaning we, it's not that we have it for students for four years and now we're making any reduction. It's one staff member that was hired and we're, we're using that staff member mainly to target ninth and 10th graders in order to give them more foundational skills. Like I said, in some instances, there may be students in 11th or 12th grade, but it's not intended for a four-year service and it, and it wasn't because that person would be spread too thin, that we really wouldn't be making any sort of effective shifts if we had one person for all four grade levels.
So I will say having students in their school, teaching them is a violation of their privacy rights. That's not going to apply with, I think, most of the 12th, 11th and 12th graders. I've spoken to a good amount of them today. Friends can't, that's not, I don't know if you've ever, if you remember high school, but ideally that's not the best situation. And I'm not looking for a final agreement today because it looks like some of you don't even know that this was happening. I am, if this is what's going to move, if this is what's going to be the decision moving forward, I wish parents were told and not just the students. I shouldn't have heard it from my son first. And I actually thought he was lying to me. So that goes to show, I really just did not think he was, he heard it right, not lying, but I didn't, I think he misheard. I thought he misheard. So I would encourage a change for next year, especially given what's gone on the last year and a half. Or I would like to ask that we revisit the issue. I guess that's a better way to ask the question.
We'll, we'll have a discussion. We have a central office meeting every Tuesday, discussion about that. You know, Carrie and Chris and I and see, see what we report back and not saying there's been any change to the plan, but we'll at least put together information.
Once. And when's that meeting, Bill?
We have a central office meeting tomorrow morning. We have one every Tuesday morning. That's, that's a management, that, that's a management.
Will there be more communication with the parents regarding this change? I mean, I didn't know it was only offered to ninth and 10th. Can it be communicated to us so we don't hear it just directly from our children?
Yeah, I, I, that's one of the issues we'll discuss tomorrow morning. We see if we need to take some.
And I just want to be clear that this is not, that we are not meeting obligations of students' individualized ed plans. So these are not, just for the school committee to understand, these are not IEP services. This was, this was the first year we were offering it. We were fortunate to be able to have this for an additional year going forward next year. We were grateful that we could still offer that, but I just don't want anyone thinking that we aren't fulfilling.
Well, that's actually not true because one of the IEP students were told that they're not getting it next year either.
Well, the, the services in the service delivery grid would not be impacted.
You know, let's, let's just take a look at what was said to whom and then, you know, we'll start there and then, you know, that will form the basis for our discussion.
Can we hear from Alicia?
So I, I was just going to say that, Carrie, that was what was, what I was actually going to ask. It sounds like this was an additional service, an additional support that was layered on top of. So when the meeting happens tomorrow, if, when you come back to the parents and us to let us know what's going on, if that could be clarified as well. And I would just say for any parent who's concerned about their own IEP or 504 services, please reach out to your team because all of those decisions are made at an individual level. And if there's something that was a general ed service that was folded into a special education 504 or IEP, your team is going to be the best place for you to get that information. So thank you for clarifying that, Carrie, but also as we go forward, can we make sure that we continue to clarify the difference between the two? And if parents have questions, reach out to your team.
Okay. So it's on my son's 504 plan. That's all I'm going to say.
Janelle, I appreciate you raising the issue. I mean, especially if, you know, if you and your son and your family was, was confused by this, this change, what feels like a change. I don't know if it's a change or if it's an aging out of a program that isn't continuing for an upper level. But certainly if there's ever a question, thanks for bringing it to our attention because you've raised it. Other families may have had the same concern. I would encourage you and your family or any family who has a concern about this to absolutely reach out to your special education team, reach out to your teacher resources, reach out to your building principal, whoever it is that you need to get connected to. So, because so many of these decisions are so very individual that we probably can't address every particular situation online tonight and it wouldn't be appropriate to do so. We certainly don't want to invite any, and violate anybody's privacy. But if you're aware, Janelle, of other students you've talked to who are concerned, encourage them to do the same. They should find out, they should have the conversation, they should have a comfort level and an understanding of what services they will be able to access next year. And let's just make sure that everybody, school and family are on the same page going forward.
Okay, perfect.
No elimination of a program, no budget reduction. It sounds like these services were provided through a grant, and we'll, we'll continue to provide whatever services we can under, under that grant going forward. But, but let's have those, those individual conversations offline, if that's helpful. But I, I do appreciate you bringing it forward, especially if there's a number of families who might have a similar concern.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Janelle.
And congratulations on not having, like, such an interesting year as last year.
Oh, it's been interesting, Janelle.
Oh, yeah, I know, but not as interesting, I guess.
Thank you, Janelle.
Bye, guys.
Bye. I love how Janelle says she's beaming in. I picture her in some Star Trek world, beaming into our meeting. It has been an adventure operating on Zoom. And with that, I will refresh the airtable one more time. I'm not seeing anything else for public comment. So next up is the elementary and the elementary school handbook approval. And we have some guests joining us.
Chris Sandler and Susan Dubois.
And hello, Principal Dubois. Welcome. It is good to see you in our virtual Brady Brunch screen.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. I was hoping to share Chris Sanders. I'm hoping that you'll be able to do that. Or maybe I can do that as well. See. I'll try doing that now.
You should be able to, if you want, or I can.
Okay. Can everybody see this? Okay, so this was shared with the school committee in the packet, but I wanted to highlight some specific things. So we were asked to make some revisions to our elementary handbook. And some of the minor things were updating the directory and district contact information, the school committee roster, coordinator positions for ADA, employee Title IV and Title IX, and updated administrative assistant contact information. But what I'd like to highlight tonight, and Susan Dubois is here as well, to talk about the perspective of the K to 2 population, was our revised discipline section to include our Westford Elementary School's behavior philosophy, including a list of unexpected behaviors and their logical consequences. To, so to frame this conversation, I would just like to read the behavior philosophy, and I hope you will indulge me as I read that to you. So the Westford Elementary School's faculty and staff believe all students are capable of being upstanding members of our school community. We believe discipline is an opportunity for students to learn from their mistakes. At times, students may need reminders and lessons to support their understandings and applications of our core values. Teachers and administrators will strive to choose logical consequences to help students demonstrate more appropriate behaviors and repair the problem for relationships. And just to talk about discipline in a historical context, maybe about 10 years ago, we were at least at the three to five level. We're still operating under the system of one size fits all. And so if there was a behavior that needed to be corrected, oftentimes, a student might miss lunch or recess regardless of whether or not that was an appropriate consequence. And oftentimes, when the child was having lunch, not literally miss lunch, but have it in the office. And so oftentimes, when the child was sitting in the office having their lunch, and you would go over and talk to them about why they were there, they would often forget or not even know why they were there, and it really didn't seem like it made sense to have that kind of a discipline policy. And so we decided to change the language in the school handbook to reflect what we're doing in our classrooms and in the school community. Most of our teachers prescribe to the responsive classroom techniques, where you're building a classroom and school committee, community built on mutual respect. And then, of course, children collaborating on creating classroom rules, but also carrying into recess and also the lunchroom as well. We've had professional development with Stuart, Stuart Oblon, Dr. Stuart Oblon, who came in and talked to the faculty about collaborative problem solving. And so that was incredibly important to us as well, where we wanted to include the student in coming up with a solution that made sense. And so what you're going to see here, and will be in the handbook, are the unexpected behaviors and logical consequences, and they follow a continuum from minor offenses and behaviors all the way to the most egregious acts of disrespect or aggressive behaviors. So the minor ones, we consider level one, and then it goes all the way to level four. And of course, you know, it's not meant to be a progression, because there are always going to be nuances. So just in looking at this briefly, you can see level one, maybe a student cuts the line, or runs inside school, or yelling, or something like that. Obviously, it would not be appropriate to take lunch away from a student and make them sit in the office for something like that. Here, we're going to use something out of the playbook of responsive classroom, and we're going to provide redirection. And in the example of running in the hallway, you might ask the student to retrace their steps and walk in the hallway if they're running. Then we move up to the level two behaviors here. You can see that they're listed, the left side of the column. And then, on the right side of the column are suggested consequences. So in the case of the disruptive or uncooperative, you may ask the student to take a break, or school staff may use verbal or nonverbal cues to redirect the student. And I wanted to point out the last sentence. It says, "At times, non-aggressive behavior may be ignored until the student calms down." And that's right from the guidance from our BCBA Abiver, who often suggests that non-aggressive behaviors in the classroom, when ignored, will often subside. And so there's no reason to put attention on a student who's being disruptive in the class. Sometimes they're looking for that negative attention. When we ignore these behaviors, oftentimes, they will go away. And so we wanted to include something like that as well. And they continue on. You can see the level three behaviors here. One thing that I wanted to point out to you was this idea of not allowing others to participate. So a lot of our logical consequences are based on our core values, which is spirit, so that's safety, perseverance, integrity, respect, inclusion, and teamwork. So obviously, we teach students about inclusion and why that's important. And just the other day, we had a major discussion with a group of fifth-grade boys who were not including another student in their basketball game, because they perceived him to be not at their athletic level. And the consequence was having a discussion with those boys and trying to figure out how they could solve this problem, and what they could do to enjoy playing their game while including him as well. And so that conversation included solutions that they could come up with, which is a good demonstration of what collaborative problem solving is all about. Okay, and then I wanted to move down here to level four and point out this bit right here, which I think, and that's using discriminatory comments regarding one's race, color, gender, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, gender, identity, or homelessness. We felt, as in an elementary team, that this was really important, because it goes along with the district's commitment to diversity and inclusion. And in these cases, we want to make sure that children understand the power of making discriminatory comments like that and potentially harassing someone with it. And so as an example of what may have happened, we had a student who came to school and was using in recess play the N-word, and comes to find out that the student didn't even understand what that word meant. And they basically were mimicking what they heard from their older sibling in high school. And so the discipline basically involved a discussion about the word and its impact. And in this particular case, I use this book right here. And so this is an autobiography of Ruby Bridges called Through My Eyes. And many of you may remember that Ruby was the little African-American girl who was the first to integrate the William France School in New Orleans, Louisiana, back in 1960, at the height of the civil rights problems that were happening in the South and, of course, in the North as well. And in that book, Ruby discusses the power of that word and how it was used against her and her family. And you might remember the iconic image that Norman Rockwell painted of Ruby marching into the school with the marshals by her side, and then that word plastered on the wall behind her. And in having this discussion with the student, I found it to be much more powerful than just simply asking the student to sit in the office. Because we were able to have a discussion about the historical context of the word and why it was offensive to African-American students. I also want to point out here that oftentimes, we're not just using the resources in our own school community, but we're reaching out to our safety resource officer. So for example, in the example of skipping school or leaving school grounds, you can see that the student will have a conversation with the school resource officer about attendance and safety. And so we find this to be a much more comprehensive approach involving students and collaborative problem solving. And I don't want to diminish the importance of involving parents in the conversation as well. Because as administrators, we can do all of the investigations that we want. But sometimes, children are able to provide more information to their parents than we're able to get at the school level. And so in discussing what's happened with the parents, we're inviting them to help us figure out what's going on and what might be at the root of the problem. And we may get more information that way. So I just wanted to share what this is in general, and the perspective at the three to five level. But Susan will certainly talk about what it looks like at K to two.
Good evening. This really was a wonderful opportunity for the principals to gather together and revise and take a look at this discipline section of the handbook, and have an opportunity to really more accurately reflect what it is that we do, you know, on a daily basis, and the philosophy for which we, you know, aspire. For example, I believe it was just three years ago, the pre-K through five principals got together, and we revised our code of conduct. Everybody individually had, you know, a wonderful code of conduct, but we wanted more consistency. So we came up with the acronym SPIRIT, and we all follow that. So in the spirit of that, this really made, you know, a lot of sense. And as Chris outlined here, you know, with his examples and taking a look, you know, at this rubric, I guess, if you will, that the logical consequences are really ways in which we structure learning opportunities. Whether, you know, they are youngest students or up to fourth and fifth grade, with the examples, you know, that he gave you. And as you look those over to, you know, you can see even, you know, with our youngest children, the K two schools. Through this process, we're having them more, you know, focus on what their behaviors are and what the consequences are, what the consequences are, and that their behavior affects, you know, others greatly. So we really want to focus on these logical consequences, you know, across the board.
Thank you very much for that update. I, I love it when our, our principals collaborate across schools and across the town. And I, I think that this update in language really reflects current practice and how just the philosophy around consequences has, has evolved over the last several years, and how that's grown through a lot of thoughtful and targeted professional development. And, and I, I think it's wonderful to have this resource in a handbook for parents that kind of more, I, I mean, I think it speaks to a parent on a different level, especially someone who hasn't been through that training to understand, oh, this is what collaborative problem solving might look like in very specific examples. So I, I think that's a great resource for parents, and, and I think it's super helpful, whenever our principals get together to be on the same page with something like that, because then we know that the same philosophy carries through from our, our K two school up to our three, five, and that the same philosophy is being practiced on the east side of town, and the west side, and north side. And I, I think that that really does help parents, because, because often, that's what we as school committee members here is, is when parents have concerns about, well, this happened at my school, but it's not happening somewhere else, or vice versa. So, so I just, I wanted to call that out and recognize all that as, as, thank you. I think that's a tremendous effort. And, you know, some other school committee members probably have questions or comments. Chris?
Yeah, just, Chris, I appreciate your examples. I think they're, they were really helpful. I almost kind of want to include them in there, so people can really see what it looks like, because they were really great. They were very illustrative of collaborative problem solving and resorted practices, so I, I thought those were great. How, how does this flow down to our staff? You know, I, I think you were able to really embody and speak to how our philosophy on behavior and discipline can be practiced. How do we know that the staff have that same sort of, you know, knowledge and understanding and, and ability to practice that?
Well, I can speak at the three to five level. Most of our staff are trained in responsive classroom. And of course, everybody attended the collaborative problem solving professional development. So I believe that everybody prescribes to this behavior philosophy, where you're including students and using it as a learning opportunity, and not just telling them that they're wrong, because we know from research that children are not born learning how to behave properly in society. And one of the things that we're adding, of course, is being attuned to cultural responsiveness, because we can't just say, we want you to behave in a certain way that fits a norm. We need to consider the family background, socioeconomic status, and, and all of that as well. And I don't think it's just sticking this into the handbook and assuming that everybody knows what it is. I think that we have to have continued discussions and faculty meetings and book studies so that we can continue this philosophy.
And I just want to add, too, that it's the way in which we set up our whole day. The way at the K two level, and probably three through five as well, when we start off, you know, with our morning meeting, and we have a chance to really problem solve. I mean, there are often very, the times students come back from recess, and, you know, things that happen, you know, spill back, and they gather together, and that's sort of a quiet time after lunch anyway, where the groups then can get together and they can talk and process it, because we want students to, you know, develop an internal understanding and some self-control. And this starts with the groundwork we lay by starting with routines and rituals, and what the expectations are, and interactive modeling. It's not just a matter of, we don't all go out, you know, en masse to our lockers and slam our lockers. What does it look like? You know, I, teachers are continuing to say, what, what does daily five sound like, you know, when we're in the room? So we do an awful lot of that throughout the day, too, that just correlates with that whole philosophy.
Right, and, and just to add on to that, one of the things that, you know, it works really well in the classrooms, but we struggle with the unstructured periods of time, like at recess and lunch. And we, of course, hire principal aides that help to manage behavior and discipline during those unstructured periods of time. And so we want to make sure that in other iterations of this, that we include those staff members, so that so that children recognize them as being integral parts of our school community. We found initially that some of the children didn't even know the principal aides' names. And that goes against our responsive classroom philosophy where we're building a school community. So we corrected that. Hillary Sturgis at the day school came up with this great idea of a bulletin board in which we had the pictures of the principal aides. And we asked the principal aides to come up with some things that were unique to them. So for example, their favorite foods or what vacations they like to go on or how many languages they spoke, et cetera. And the children played a game where they tried to figure out what those, what those attributes were. And we found that in doing that, they started having conversations with the principal aides and getting to know them at a more personal level. And in turn, just by knowing the principal aide's name, they were much more ready to respect their authority. And so including them is incredibly important as well. And because we have a lot of turnover, we have to make sure that that happens on a yearly basis.
Thank you. That's, those are great updates and, and ideas and makes just a world of sense. But I, from a child's perspective who didn't know the name of their principal aide, gosh, it makes total sense. So thank you. Other hands. Oh, Catherine?
Thanks Gloria. I actually just, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you to the, the principals and Carrie. I mean, this was a very small conversation last week and I was just blown away with the turnaround and the amount of work and time and effort that went into really dramatically updating the handbook. So I think well done and, and a big thank you. I know it's been a busy year. So I think it's really good that, you know, we're keeping our kids and their social emotional wellbeing you know, at the forefront, especially in the coming twelve months. So I was really impressed with, with the turnaround and what you, you produced in that time. So well done and thank you.
Any other comments or, or questions? Then I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the FY twenty-two elementary school handbook.
Second.
You can fight for the second.
Give it to the birthday boy.
And vote is to Chris.
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Bing Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, that would be unanimous. Thank you both for joining us tonight and for all the work that went into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Convey that, convey that to the, to your colleagues. Thank you.
I dare you to will. Thank you.
And next we have a discussion of out of state and overnight field trips. And we have, it looks like another guest joining us.
We have Bob Ware presenting for the high school and maybe addressing middle school.
Great.
I'm not seeing Dean Ware on our attendee list.
I'm not quite sure he's attending tonight.
Okay. I could explain.
Well, most of these trips, as you see, are repeats. There are two that have not been approved that are service related because they are occurring or they were proposed to occur during the school day and take instructional time. But virtually all of them are repeats that you have approved in the past. Now, I will say that we present these to you with the understanding that there, if there are any directives from the Department of Education with respect to COVID related or safety issues in general, then we will come back to you with a, any particular or any necessary change of plans. Those trips that have historically been outside of the country, international in nature, certainly are subject to the State Department State Department advisories in terms of safety of travel. So we will observe all, all of the regulations and all of the warnings that we have in the past. And if there's any change that represents, you know, the necessity to cancel a trip or revise it, we'll bring that back to you in the future.
And I know there, there were a couple of new proposals and everything that Bill had mentioned goes right along with these as well. So it's something that the staff members just hope to get on the table in the case that things are a go. They will already have the approval, but at, at Westford Academy, you can see that there's a new trip, science trip being proposed to the Bahamas. This is something will take place over the summer in a year from June. And so there, there's a lot of detail here that will be filled in once we understand who would be interested, if we can go, if anything that's in this proposal has to be modified, for example.
And I would, I would very much be interested in being a chaperone on, on that trip. You know, that, that is a fascinating trip to a research center. I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at that online, but students have just an outstanding opportunity for biological study.
So, so I guess one, one clarification for, for I guess myself and the public. We always approve these trips long in advance because especially if there's an out of state field trip that does require a, a public school committee approval a year in advance. But if I'm understanding correctly, we're not necessarily able to make the promise at this time that, that these, or guarantee that these trips will occur. We will have to, to wait and see how public health guidance and, and travel guidance evolves.
That's correct.
Okay. The, the other question I had was specific to that, that new science department trip. It's listed in the, the spreadsheet as June one. But I believe in, in the detailed description, it says the date is TBD. Is this a trip that would take place after the end of the school year, kind of at, at the end of June or maybe even July? Or would it happen during the school year?
It would not be during the school year. It specified that there would be zero days of school missed.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to double check because it was June one, but I had a feeling that was just a placeholder since it's TBD when the exact date would be.
Yes, good catch. Not during the school days.
Great, great. Other questions? I thought I saw some hands. Alicia?
I apologize if this has already been brought up, my internet cut out. But I know that in the chaos of shutdown from the end of the two thousand and nineteen school year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and then, you know, everything that happened last year, there were a lot of questions from parents about reimbursements and rescheduling and things like that. So I would just like to throw out there that if we can, as we start to communicate these trips as they start to happen, can we please keep an eye on what reimbursements might look like, what cancellation policies might look like and very clearly communicate that to parents as the process unrolls? So that we don't have, we couldn't anticipate it last time around. Everything just landed on top of us, but if we can try and anticipate answering those questions ahead of time for parents, that would really be appreciated.
Yeah, that, that will be certainly be addressed with as much specificity as, as possible. Because there were really some unpalatable situations last year. We don't, we do not want to repeat it rooms.
Catherine?
And this might be a very silly question, so forgive me. I'm just curious with the field trips and the costs involved and considering the nature of the last twelve months we're, we're coming out of and the financial stress on, on families already. And are there programs or support available to students maybe with, who would need help with fees?
Catherine, there's, there's nothing formally in, in place. However, we do receive some donations, some private donations, some parents who are very generous and say, we'd like you to use this for any student or their family who are struggling. So that they have an opportunity to go, go on the trip. We don't as such, as I said, they'll have a, any type of formal you know, program such, such as that. We help out as much as we, we possibly can.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we could have a look at this in terms, because obviously I think it kind of maybe raises an equity issue. Valerie?
Just two quick questions from my own understanding. I noticed that Stony Brook goes to Canopy Lake in seventh grade, but Blanchard goes in eighth. Is that not a joint? It looked like, you know, DC is a joint trip maybe. So is Canopy not?
No. So what, what they, what happened a number of years ago was in trying to spread out the trips and the opportunities for students, Stony Brook started having the seventh graders go to Canopy. They don't, they don't go together. Even when they go to DC, there's been times when they've been able to bring the two groups together, but there's been times when they haven't been able to get together. So it's really not a joint trip. But that was just a decision that was made at Stony Brook a while ago to put the Canopy trip into the seventh grade so that they had an end of the year activity because the eighth graders were already going to DC. It was just a different choice that the building's made.
Okay, thank you. And just a quick question on the WA ones. Can you clarify again the two that were, the, the two that didn't receive approval? You said they were during school hours, but some of these dates also look like weekdays on the, on the approved ones. So I'm kind of curious on how that, how that decision is made.
Sure. So I did not move forward with approval for clubs and activities beyond the school day or field trips that are associated with those that are during the school day, unless there was a, a particular event that is a date beyond our control. So the ones that were not approved were different field trips that were very much within our control. And then comparing that to the field trips that that same group was taken, taking after school and on the weekends. Those, those two, I felt would not be approved, should not be approved.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Any other hands I might have missed? Okay, then I'll put forth the, the motion that we approve the FY twenty-two out of state and overnight field trips subject to any public health or travel guidance at the time.
Second.
And any further discussion? Seeing nobody waving at me, all in favor to Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you to your creation and all of the staff who put such effort into making these trips and opportunities possible for students. So thank you. And now I have to do a mea culpa because I was zipping along on my agenda and I skipped over student representative updates. So I apologize. Hannah, the floor is yours. How are things at the high school?
Sure. Very busy. We have prom this week and then graduation. The seniors are doing their capstone projects right now. I think they're wrapping up this week. We have AP season and the teachers are really good about accommodating the absences and making that up. Very thankful for no finals this year. That's a big stress reliever. I think everything is pretty busy and exciting right now and that's pretty much all I have.
Well, great. Thank you for the updates Hannah. And, and best wishes with all of the end of the year activities. And I always feel like at this point of the year, it, people think it's like on the, the, like the tail end of the school year and it trades off. And I'm like, no, not in Westford. We sprint to the finish line. So, you know, good luck with your sprint to the end because that's always what it seems like, especially at WA. So good luck with your sprint to the end. And apologies again for messing up the order. Now, much less fun, but, but also important, we need to discuss the Blanchard roof. Bill?
Yes, and Paul Fox is joining us also. The town's insurance carrier has determined that the Blanchard roof is continuing to enter into a state of, of failure, which basically means delamination of the seams, which is caused by weather and ultraviolet light over a period of time. It's the original roof to the school, which was built in nineteen ninety-four. So it's going on about twenty-seven, seven years old. And the concern is now that the insurance company, as a result of, of the failing condition of the roof, has raised the town's deductible for any damage associated with water intrusion at the Blanchard from a $5,000 deductible to a $50,000 deductible. Quite, you know, quite considerable, certainly ten times and fold. So the selectman, select board are aware of it. We're making you aware of it because we have to submit what is referred to as a statement of interest, an SOI, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which will essentially inform them that we are interested in being placed in queue for a, for a roof repair project. They, they do prioritize, certainly in place priority on roof repairs and boiler systems, certainly any, any other health and safety, you know, types of capital improvements. This will require some commitment of funding to the town over the next year, year and a half. And I see Paul on here. Paul, you know, if you don't mind, go, I'll turn it over to Paul to talk a little bit about the, the SOI.
All right. Hi, Paul. Welcome.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. I missed the little bit of introduction that Bill gave. I must have a little bit of technical error. So I do sorry, or I am sorry if I am repeating myself at all. I'm also on the energy meeting call right now. So it's pretty interesting trying to balance the two. Nonetheless, so the statement of interest is something that the town of Westford and public school system have been down the path with the Abbott School System. In my opinion, I think that we had a phenomenal experience with them, although I did catch the tail end of it. I'm really excited with the results that are now on the Abbott School System. So that's essentially what we're attempting to do again. And the first step is to submit a statement of interest. And that involves, there's two types of programs. One is an accelerated repair program and the other is a full model program. Here, since we're specifically after just one system and our system is obviously the roof, they just classify this as an accelerated repair program. So we submit our statement of interest, which we're gathering all the data. We'll ask for a vote tonight here from the school committee. Tomorrow we'll be seeking a vote from the select board. They'll vote too. If both of these parties agree, I'll then just require a few signatures. Gloria, I think you're a signature that I'll be requesting, same with Bill. And then town manager, Ms. Ross there will also be requested for one. So as we gather all this data, we put it together in the statement of interest, basically trying to present our case for why we above other school systems deserve the need for a new roof. Some of the feedback that we've initially been getting is that John, who's the head custodian over at the Blanchard, has been dealing with a lot of water leaks over the last several years. He's constantly going after and chasing tiles to replace the tiles. Furthermore, we're throwing maintenance personnel on the roof trying to deal with the issue as well as occasionally calling in the roofer. But really it's a losing battle at this point. Additionally, Maya, who is our insurance carrier, has also been on top of the roof and they recently presented it at the town manager's office with direction that as of a couple of months back, our deductible for that building was going to increase 10 times over. Was going to increase ten times over. I believe it was five thousand. Now it's at fifty thousand per incident that occurs. So financially, we're definitely in a tough situation. Building is built nineteen ninety-two, so we are looking at approximately thirty-year roof, which is great value, great life expectancy out of it. We're certainly in the position where we're only at half of the building's useful life. MSBA, I've heard them quoting saying that they expect forty-five years out of a building. Me personally, I expect sixty years out of a building. So this is a great investment for the town to make all, or all around. It makes a lot of sense to go after this project. So I'm here, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have in regards to the overall process that's involved with submitting the statement of interest. Or any ongoing current conditions that we are experiencing. Thank you for your time and I hope that you support this vote.
Thank you both. I had, I had a couple of questions. One, well, I guess first it's just kind of a clarification for the public. I mean, clearly thi- this is a necessary repair. This needs to be done. And I, I, I understand the maintenance problems it poses, but just to reassure the public, there, there is no safety concern for students. Due, due to the, the condition of the roof.
That's correct.
Just when people hear roof failure, don't want anyone to be alarmed. So necessary repairs, but not a safety concern. What would be the timeline? I know we've been through this process a couple of times as a committee with, with the MSBA. What would be the timeline if? This is, this goes through the appropriate steps. When would we be actually doing that roof repair?
Sure. I'm happy to take this one. So the first step is for the MSBA to reboot, review ourself as well as every other application. We're already at a unique timeline because typically these applications were due in February, in which we had not yet received direct order to go after this project. So we're already in a little bit of an interesting new, unique timeline right now. But they, it is, the accelerated repair program is supposed to really, you're supposed to gain your acceptance in less than a year. So that's the, or, or even faster than that.
No, no, they've been very delayed. Yeah, I won't be surprised if we're not, I'm hoping we'll, we'll bid in and be able to go next summer. But it may get delayed past that. They've been very slow lately.
Yeah. Optimistic, optimistic next summer. Yeah. You know, one, one of the benefits now of the Southern modern day MSBA, you know, that used to be. Contained within the DESC and then the state moved it out of there and responsibility to state treasurer's. Office. They sometimes, oftentimes now have gone through the, what's called the designer selection process. And selected architects and also onsite project, project manager. Those are activities that school system, individual school systems used to have to do by themselves. And by selecting the architects, the state selecting the architects, you know, they, they, they're focusing more on cost savings and function. Because, you know, and this is no knock on architects, but architectural. Designer schools, some, you know, at some point in times has had some flamboyancy of design. Features built into them, which don't necessarily translate into efficiencies. And a, a project manager, which is our representative. Can either assure a very successful and a quality job or a terrible job. And that's why it's so, so important for the state to have done that very thorough review process in terms of. Of selecting among a pool of project managers.
Um, the, the last question I had, and I know Bill, I mentioned this to you last week. We also received a, a similar comment from Christina Green on FinCom. There, there certainly is always a question whenever we're talking about roofs, about solar panels. There is a question potentially to be discussed on the town warrant this year about Miller. That's been set aside for the moment because of the age of the Miller roof, but since we would be looking to replace the Blanchard roof. Is there, there any question or consideration about whether we, we would see? If it was appropriate to put solar panels on the roof of the Blanchard school when this repair work is done?
I think that's probably what Paul has been discussing with the energy year committee.
Well, yeah, it, it's always a, it's always a hot topic. Solar is definitely a fundamental process of, you know, the energy committee. And they're, they're hopefully going to be working on language. That way we see it come across any type of project of this nature. Important item to note is that, and I just did confirm it today too, that the MSBA still does not reimburse. For energy initiative projects such as solar panels. So the town will be fully on the hook for this cost. It's described as an ineligible cost. So with that being said, the town can still decide to pursue solar. In which I'm going to guess that there's a lot of voices that are saying that, yes, let's do it and let's pursue that. And we'll still be able to move forward with the same designer if that's the choice. The other direction is kind of go on the back end of it, let them build it, let them put it on. We just need to make sure that they build it appropriately to house the infrastructure. And then we finish the MSBA project and then we go and select our, the direction that we choose to go for, for solar panels. So I would completely envision, I think the Blanchard is a beautiful spot, you know, flat roof, really tucked back there where. Hopefully we wouldn't even have any not in my backyard concerns about it. So.
Quite honestly, one of the alternatives, Paul, that I'd ask you to check in with the energy committee on is about. Twenty-five to thirty years ago, I was meeting with representatives from a solar company in New Jersey. Now there was sort of first generation. Panels at the time to place a solar, small solar field. At the back of the day school field between the day school and the Blanchard. And I think that's a very viable location. We, at that time, we were talking about panels that would track in accordance with the movement of the earth. And, and in an optimal angle of the sun. I would still love to, to work on a project like that and see if that's viable. That doesn't get into any roof intrusions. Doesn't impede any roof replacements down the road and I think could be more efficient.
Ground solar is certainly great as long as the real estate's there to support it. So always a big fan.
All right. Well, thank you for addressing those questions. Glad to hear that, that solar's a, a possibility and is part of the discussion. It sounds like at this stage, we wouldn't need to do anything different since MSBA wouldn't be reimbursing for that portion of the project. So any other comments, questions from the committee? I feel like I've, I've been a question hog. Anything, anything else? Seeing no waves. I'll, I'll put forth the, the motion that we. Authorize, I guess, the superintendent and myself to sign the statement of interest. To the MSBA in our application for a Blanchard roof project.
And everybody can see, sorry, everybody can see the language that's in the packet, correct? Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. We've got all those details. Thank you. Okay, I, I've got, got a second. Any, any further discussion or questions before we vote? Okay, seeing none. Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us, Paul, and juggling multiple meetings. Say hi to the energy committee.
Yes, thank you so much. And also a quick thank you to everybody that's been working on this project. It's by far not just me. It's so many other people. Jeanie, Tim Hillsop, just everybody's been involved. So really, thank, thank, thank them all.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you. Next up, I'll turn it to get things out of order again. COVID grant update.
Well, we wanted to give you, and I'll turn this over to Jamie, but we wanted to give you an update of the various sources of monies. That we have received over the last year, year and a half, with the status of those expenditures are in terms of any available balances. How we've committed them and what are the end dates? So you'll notice the SR three has an end date of. Two thousand twenty-four, which means that, you know, that could be spent through the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. And twenty-three, twenty-four school years. So actually over a three-year period. Now that particular grant. We actually, the actual figure is five eighty-seven, three sixteen on that, on that grant. That just was published this afternoon. That grant requires the input of a lot of different stakeholders, similar to what we became involved with, with the construction of the budget. So there's a lot to that grant that Chris and Carrie and, and others will be involved with, but Gina. Turn it over to you. I didn't want to steal your thunder, but.
No, no, I'm quite all right. I'm also happy to have you speak to it. Yeah, so we were just looking where we're at with the current grants and filing all our final reports and making sure we have them all spent appropriately. And as you can see, I've given a short overview of what we have spent those particular grants on for this current year in the memo that I put out. And mostly, a lot of, a lot of the grants have been used for additional staff costs, additional supplies. And a lot of support for students in terms of equipment for them, for their remote learning. And some various softwares to help the staff see where our students are, are at. And what, where we need to bring them up to be. And then going forward, the newer grants, as we've mentioned. One of the student opportunity act, we're using the, that all for the school adjustment counters at the elementary level. Also paying partial for another part. We didn't have quite enough in that grant. We also put some of that. Into the other SR two grants as well.
The SR two, just to re- refresh your memory, required us to spend a minimum of ten thousand dollars towards, towards the social emotional. Wellness of students. We spent eleven thousand five hundred out of next year's budget, keeping in mind that that. Two hundred and seventy-one thousand is fully committed to offsetting next year's budget. And is being used for instructional software, for custodial supplies, for network and telecommunications contracted services. Some instructional supplies and special education supplies and the eleven thousand five hundred towards the adjustment council. So we, we tried not to spend it on recurring personnel costs. So that was an obligation, ten thousand dollar obligation we had to meet. But I think it was wisely and strategically used to offset some of the costs in fiscal twenty-two.
Does anyone have any other additional questions regarding any of the grants? It, it does sound like the, the conversation particularly about SR three will be a longer one. Certainly. Appreciate that. I know a, a lot of us, school committee nerds follow Tracy Novick. And she has, she has warned that to beware of the fiscal cliff with the SR three money and be careful how it is, it is spent. So I believe we're, we are certainly doing so responsibly and making sure we're not over committing ourselves in the way that, that these funds are being spent. I know just an immense amount of work goes into, to tracking all of these expenses and capturing them. And keeping track of all the various buckets and it's, it is added on a layer of complication to this year.
Never seen before.
Yeah, exactly. So really, thank you to, to Jean. Thank you to your predecessor, Ingrid Nielsen. Thank you to everyone.
Wonderful job.
Yeah, in the finance department who has, has done such a good job of, of tracking all of these expenses. And, and everyone in central office and leadership for capturing all of them.
Anne Marie and Jan in my office have been really very carefully tracking these for me. They're doing a wonderful job.
Yeah. We, we can't get reimbursed for what we don't track. So thank you. It, it's, it's a huge, hugely important role. So thank you so much. And thank you for, for this update. It's, it's helpful to see it all in one place. Any, any questions from the committee? Catherine?
Yeah, I'm just curious, the Bridge to Success program that's running over the summer, is that coming as one of, one of these grants?
That is included in one of the, that's it, that we're using some of the SR three money for that. Well, we hope to use some of the SR three money. Is that correct, Carrie?
That's right. Either that or the, the funds for summer school, which is still. We, we have not received details, I believe, Bill. Correct me if I'm wrong. We haven't received details about that. But we're, we're kind of anticipating that that will be tucked into additional funds for summer support that will be coming.
Are those, are the state level funds that we're waiting on?
As it is federal.
Oh, okay. Other, other questions, comments? Did I see a hand? Nope, I'm not seeing any. So thank you for this information. If anyone, you know, on the committee, you know, looking through the details. I know there's a lot of different buckets. If, if you have additional questions, just let's, let's follow up. And the conversation particularly regarding the ongoing SR three funds will continue. So thank you very much. The next thing we have on our agenda is the maintenance job description update.
Yes, periodically we review the roles and responsibilities of particularly our support staff. Sometimes our, our maintenance staff. And we want to make a change to this job description. That formerly pertained to HVAC mechanic. That person has taken on more and more work as an electrician. Because he is a licensed electrician. And we want to accurately reflect that. So we, I'll just, and this is not for vote tonight. We just want to inform you of this and you can vote on it at the next, next meeting. That we have added the fact that this position is responsible also for electrical work. We have included that in some of the qualifications and also in some of the duties and responsibilities referring specifically to, to electrical work.
I know we're not voting on this this evening, but does this, this job description change also involve a salary change?
No, no salary change. Thank you for asking that.
Any, any questions? I know we typically like to present these at one meeting and then if there are any, any questions. We can address them and then we will vote on it at our next meeting. But anything right now? Okay, then thank you for that update and we'll be sure and have this on the agenda for next time to approve. The, the next item we have on the agenda is school committee officer nominations. I had previously informed the committee that we would be doing this in June. So without objection, we will table this item for the moment. And we will do our nominations and officer elections at our final meeting on June fourteenth. Any questions or concerns? I definitely encourage anyone on the committee who is considering running for a role. Reach out to the, the current occupant of that role, find out what it's involved, what the time commitments are. Have any of your questions addressed so that, you know, you can ascertain if that's a, a good fit for you. And how you would like to serve the committee next year. And then we'll do that at our next meeting on June fourteenth. Subsequent to that, over our summer break, we'll do all of the. Reassignments and reappointments to the various liaisons and subcommittees. But that will be a, a subsequent step that the new chair can deal with. And make those appointments. So any questions right now? Okay, then seeing no objections, we will table that item till June fourteenth. And we will also, next, we're moving on to approval requests. We need to update the warrant signature authority. And some people may think, didn't we do this recently? We did. We had recently updated the signature, signature authority because we're not meeting in person. And we need to sign the expense and payroll warrants. So we designated someone to sign those on behalf of the committee since we're meeting remotely. Now that the emergency meeting rules are ending in mid-June. We will be moving back to in-person meetings, but it will also be summertime. So we might not be meeting. All the time over the summer, but those payroll and expense warrants still need to get paid. So we always designate a summer signatory so that on behalf of the committee, someone can sign. To make sure all of those payroll and expense warrants still happen over the summer. to make sure all of those payroll and expense warrants still happen over the summer, even if it doesn't quite line up with our meetings. So with us only having one meeting in June and then potential irregular meetings over the summer, we will be designating a summer signatory who on behalf of the committee can sign payroll and expense warrants during June, July, and August. And that's why we're retaking the vote because it's for a different reason. Any, any questions or concerns about doing that? Alicia?
Just a suggestion that we designate the signatory and the backup signatory like we did for the not meeting in person signatory. I'm, I know Chris and I had just volunteered to do that as the people who are signing while we're not meeting in person. I'm more than willing to take that on. And I think there's only like a 10 or so day period where I would not be around. But I think having the second signatory is also important for the summer, just in case.
So does that work, Alicia? Are you willing to continue to be primary? And Chris, can you continue to be backup?
It's really been too onerous. I can't, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, Alicia, just, I mean, do you know the 10 days? I was just thinking, we probably should check that we're not both gone at the same time.
Yes, so mine would be from June 29th to July 9th. I think that's approximately 10 days.
Okay, there's a chance I'm, well, no, I would, I would be just missing a few days. So I'd be able to hit on the weekday to sign, so I should be fine.
Okay.
And willing.
Does, does that work, both willing? Does anybody want to arm wrestle them for the honor? Okay, all right, then I will make a motion to approve as our, our summer signatory authorization for June through August, primary being Alicia and alternate backup as Chris.
Second.
And vote is to Chris?
Aye.
And Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, so that would be unanimous. And next up, we have some more approvals. Bill?
Yes, I have presented to you a salary schedule for non-union personnel that we present every year. Most will be receiving a 2% increase. So there are several who differ from that, one by, by choice. And that would be a 1% increase. So that was at the employees' option. Two members of our staff will continue with the same salary they have right now. And on the sheet, where we are hiring some new personnel, the, those replacements, they, the salaries are to be determined yet. There are a couple of locations where it indicates a 2% increase, but those have to be negotiated for new people coming into the position. So I ask for your approval on the salary recommendations for those staff. Once again, is entirely consistent with what the town has done and the parameters that we have always operated under in terms of a cost of living adjustment.
I'll, I'll just add a clarification for anyone from the public that saw this information in the packet. The reason that, you know, all of these administrators and the support personnel that are listed are, are being approved in this manner is because they're not part of a bargaining unit and they're not, those salaries aren't negotiated as part of a unit, a union negotiation. So that's why all of these are done separately. Any questions or clarifications from the committee?
I'd just say also, they all have individual contracts. There is no global contract that covers a, a group of them. They're, they're all individual in nature.
Well, thank you for, for all the work that went into preparing this. And I will make a motion that we approve the FY '22 non-union and administrator exempt salaries as set forth in the packet with, of course, the open positions to be determined as, as needed as those positions are filled.
Second.
Any further discussion? Then seeing none, vote is to Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure everyone will be very appreciative.
We are appreciated of, of everyone's efforts this year. Next up, I think we've got two, two other MOAs.
Yes, we have two memorandum of agreements in terms of compensation for next year. We have the school secretaries, as you know. If there's a group of people who are indispensable, it's the school secretaries. And they work extraordinarily hard. They have agreed to a 2% increase, similar to everyone else. Once again, it is a one-year extension, similar to Unit A, Unit B, Unit, Unit C. And we also have a memorandum of agreement with the central office support staff of the same nature, one-year agreement at a 2% COLA, no other changes to either the school secretaries or the central office support staff contracts.
Any, any questions? I'm guessing to keep things on the up and up, we have to do these separately. So I'll put forth a motion to approve the one-year MOA with the school secretaries reflecting a 2% salary increase.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, further discussion? Okay, votes to Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, so that is unanimous. And the next one, motion to approve the one-year MOA with the central office support staff reflecting a 2% COLA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, birthday boy. And vote is to Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, that is unanimous. And thank you, Bill, for the work on those. And also please convey our thanks to the school secretaries and, and our support staff. We know what vital service they provide to the schools. They are indeed on the front lines every day.
Just know that your support means very much to them.
Thank you. And now we're on to warrants. Alicia, you're up.
Okay, motion to approve payroll warrant number 2148 S P dated May 27th, 2021 in the amount of $2,249,987.49.
And all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Aye, so that one's unanimous. And next?
Okay, motion to approve expense warrant 2148 S E dated May 27th, 2021 in the amount of $534,139.30.
Second.
And all in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, so that's unanimous. And now minutes.
Motion to approve school committee meeting minutes regular session dated March 18th, 2021 and March 22nd, 2021.
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, unanimous. And last one?
And with a huge thank you to Nina and Valerie for catching us up, motion to approve school committee executive session minutes not for public release dated March 29th, 2021, April 13th, 2021, and April 26th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor to Chris? Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, unanimous. And I will echo that thanks to both Nina and Valerie for keeping us up to date and moving forward with our, our official minutes. I know it is a lot of work, so thank you both. And Bill, personnel update?
Well, two, two notable updates in the personnel report. First of all, Nancy Hill, who has worked in our finance department for a number of years, actually started out at Westwood Academy many years ago. Has done an outstanding job in whatever role she's been involved with in the school system. Nancy will be retiring. I believe she is moving south with her family and we wish her a wonderful, healthy, happy retirement. The other person talked about one of the unsung heroes, June McGonigal. June and I have had a terrific working relationship over the years and have enjoyed watching her being promoted through the cafeteria staff up to the caf manager position at the Stony Brook. Keeping in mind that we have a cafeteria program that is one of the very best and most successful in the state with an extraordinarily high participation rate of almost 72%. And the average is about 52%. And June is one of those people who is responsible for that. And I want to put her contribution into perspective. Over the years of her employment, averaging on a number of students that she has served every day, she has been responsible for preparing with, with other colleagues in her school about 100, 1,450,900 meals. So, you know, if you, you get, you have to kind of step back for a minute and say, what is the contribution of this individual? And that is extraordinary. Thank you, June. We wish her also a very happy, healthy retirement.
That, that is extraordinary and, and it is similarly extraordinary that you know that, Bill. You've done that calculation. That is, that is quite extraordinary. You always say it, it does, it takes every person to, to make the school system work and that is indeed true. So thank you. Anything further tonight or are we ready for our motion to adjourn? Okay. Well, we, we, we started a couple of minutes late, but we're, we're ending a bit early. So happy birthday to Sean. We're actually ending early tonight and that, that's a rarity. So with that motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Appropriately so. Vote is to Chris?
Aye.
And Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
And aye, that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. And a reminder that our plan is to be back on June 14th for our final meeting of the year. Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.